All right, everybody, I'll call tonight's council meeting into order, please. Everybody would stand for the pleasure of the leaders.
The United States of America, the two republics of Jesus, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have a forum tonight?
Yes.
All right, excellent. We do not have a public hearing scheduled, so we will go directly into the review and approval of last month's minutes. So counsel, if you guys would, ladies and gentlemen, would review the notes from November the 4th, 2019, please. All right, we have a motion to accept as written. Yeah, I'll second it. All right, we have a second. All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we get into the public comments section of the agenda, I would like to take a second to introduce the third employee of the town of Sharpsburg. Ms. Julie Stroud is our deputy clerk.
Yes.
She is working part-time. She started off volunteering about a month ago with us. She is part of our quilters, the Sharpsburg Peacemakers. She came in and volunteered and did such a good job, we went ahead and hired her on part-time. Julie helps out with a little bit of anything and everything, public facing duties, a little bit of back-office work, a little bit of everything, just like everybody else here does. So Julie, thank you for coming. Introduce you to counsel, this is Cynthia Puckett, Stan Parton, Tom Teagle, and Ms. Elizabeth Good. Our mayor pro tem is not here tonight, she's not feeling well, and of course, you know Dina already. So you want to say anything? Not put you on the spot?
Thank you for hiring me. I was two and a half years into retirement and decided that I needed something to do, no, other than quilting and, you know, shopping and stuff like that. So I've been in the corporate world thirty-plus years prior to, well, retirement. I worked for Hewlett Packard for seventeen and thirty-something years here in Atlanta, and I'm happy to be part of this.
Thank you. Well, we are certainly glad to have you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it, and she's already helped with some of the things that we've had in, and I know that, and she's helped me a couple of times already, and I know Dina is just thrilled to have an extra set of hands around here because those six, seven hundred phone calls a month add up. And I will say that over the last month or so that you've been helping out or more, she has been a lot less stressed. So that is already worth its weight in gold.
My blood pressure is starting to go down.
So, thank you very much. All right, so the first thing we're going to do tonight is have public comments. We've got a couple of visitors, a couple of speakers, and the first one on the list is Ms. Shelby Garland. Shelby, would you like to stand up and tell us what we can help you with or you can help us with?
So, as you all know, the library just opened, and it needs some help with organizing books and putting the author and anything else in it. And I'm a very good writer, typer, and I have a good score in reading, so I think I'll be pretty good for this job.
Okay, excellent. So you'd just like to help out and volunteer and help out at the library? All right, counsel, if I can get a motion to let Ms. Shelby Garland help at the library?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I've got, you've got a second? All in favor?
I've got a question.
Oh, hold up. What's that?
What grade are you in?
Okay, good girl.
I was curious. It wasn't in the letter.
All in favor? All right, unanimous, you are approved as the librarian's assistant. Sound good? Brandia will be reaching out to you to set up a schedule. Just make sure that you respond to her and go forth and prosper. All right, second on the agenda is Mr. Michael McPherson, the intergovernmental coordinator with the Georgia Municipal Association. He has an invitation to the Capitol for the upcoming legislative session. Mr. McPherson, would you like to speak for a second?
I appreciate the time on your calendar, and, or on your agenda, rather. Honorable members of the council, thank you for what you do. You're not thanked enough, you and your cohorts around the state aren't thanked enough for giving your time to the community often enough, because it does take a lot out of your schedule to do what you do and to do the work for your constituents. So thank you from me, and thank you from the Georgia Municipal Association. We are here to help when we can. Legislative session is right upon us, kickoff in mid-January, and this year, as always, there will be challenges and will be opportunities. But the strength of our association and the strength of our lobbying efforts stem from you, the council members across the state, and your relationships with legislators that are local. So we ask that you not only maintain those relationships, as you've got one of the newest members of the General Assembly in this district, you also can visit them at the Capitol while they're doing their work. And so that's what we're looking to start up. This is the first city that I have had the honor of visiting in my new role as intergovernmental coordinator, to invite you to come to the Capitol at some point during the legislative session, to maintain that close bond with your legislators that you may know through your operations professionally or otherwise, and the ones that represent you. It's vital. We've already started work on short-term rental regulation. We've started to work on fighting residential design standards. There's an active bill that was dropped last year in those regards that would preempt our ability to set up, or your ability, or your citizens' ability to weigh in on the design standards within the community. We are looking to set up a local government finance authority that would help finance infrastructure projects and possibly, you know, other things that you may need as you do your business. That's being worked on in coordination with ACCG as well. We're expecting some interesting things to come out of study committees that are ongoing right now. Local maintenance and improvement grants are weighted, the formula is weighted in a way that a four-lane highway is treated the same way as a dirt road in terms of how the structure is and that formula. And so the two are not the same, and the two do not cost the same per mile. And so we're hoping that that formula will receive some significant change. E-scooters and micro-mobility options, it's a big deal in Atlanta right now. They've got these things laying all over the streets, but they're very popular. So what we're looking to do is make sure that there's options for regulation, but at the same time, be sure that we are not preempted in the use of our right-of-way. And that's how it trickles down to all of our members, is when we get preempted from our authority. So local cybersecurity needs and other limits to home rule are also, you know, in the works at all times. Interest groups such as the Home Builders Association, the Georgia Association of Realtors, and the Georgia Chamber of Commerce have pushed for those design standard preemptions that we see. We'll be working closely with y'all to get that message out there to you legislators that it's something that's important to keep, not only for the look and feel of your community, but at the same time, have your citizens' input so that you can build or rebuild a community in the way that the folks there want to see it.
My understanding of the residential design standards is that the state would issue design standards that all the cities would have to follow, and we would lose local control over that. And I'm sorry, that's home rule. That's up to municipalities to decide, not the state.
Right, and it's your choice whether you feel like you need to wade into those waters or not, but at a certain point, you know, communities do need to get involved, and where they have, they've done great things. And so with that, to the mayor and honorable members of the council, invite you, invite y'all to your state Capitol. And I've given my card, this is to your clerk, so you can call me at any point if you want to, if you want to come down. Parking is available at GMA. You don't have to park, you don't have to pay the bar down there. We would love to have you. So thank you for your time, and thank you for what you did.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Let me ask you a question. What you really after though is, you ask for us to get to know these guys and apply pressure on them?
If necessary. Nothing wrong with that. One of the things that I didn't mention tonight, but we always talk about it at every GMA function, is the hometown connection. There is nothing more important than to let the legislator know what you do, because if they don't have any experience in local government, like our new representative here, it's something that y'all need to show, just exactly what it is you do, how you manage your funds efficiently, the things that you're doing for your constituents, the buy-in that you have from your community and everything that goes with it, because it's time and energy. And they need to understand that it's not necessarily what they're hearing in the news about some, you know, some community doing something wrong. In their backyard, they're doing it the right way. You need their help to ensure that your abilities are maintained as far as legislation goes.
Over the years, I've known several of these guys, and they're open to that. They want to hear, they want to know what's going on. The good ones do.
Yeah, they usually do. Very seldom do they not want to hear from their constituents, and so that's where, that's what we ask for y'all's help.
And I think what I'm going to do, and maybe we can make it a tradition here in town, is the January before session starts, invite the local legislators to come and speak about what they want to do and get input from the citizens and the council, and just kind of hear in their own words, you know, what their goals are and what they hope to achieve.
And we're happy to come be a part of that, just to face with the name. That's part of the idea of inviting you to the Capitol to participate with us, is if we can't get you, if we can't get you in the community, we want to be standing there next to you at the Capitol. We want them to see you when they're looking at me. Because that's something that every once in a while, those folks that don't want to listen or that don't want to give you a straight answer, they'll say, oh, well, I haven't heard from my people back home. I had an instance where I had just talked to the people back home. I know they just talked to them, but that was what I got from them. So it's always good to back it up and for them to know that you've got their cell phone number, and I've got your cell phone number, vice versa. So that's putting it together and ensuring that they understand that we speak with a unified voice, GMA.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. And also, GMA is a tremendous, tremendous asset to us, if not on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, because we have our liability insurance through them, we have our IT in a box through them, we call them whenever we, I'm sorry?
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp. So we have just tons of resources, and it's an investment. The, we invest in the GMA, and the GMA turns out and invests in us. So it's a very, very strong organization, lots of good information, and we couldn't do it without their help. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from counsel or public before we continue on to the community center instructors? Okay, so just to give you all a little bit of background, as you know, we rent out the community center to our quilters, art club, dancers, CPR, and up until recently, the garden club, and our senior services. We have held steady on the fees that we charge the instructors for a number of years. I don't know that I've ever heard of an increase being done in the last ten or fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. And one of the things that we're looking at as costs increase and as we build more of an administrative foundation, we need to formalize some of the structures around our instructors. And so we have gone to all four, three, four, five of our instructors and asked them for three things. And Dina, help me out here if I misstate anything. We need to do a better job of tracking who all comes in here. Our future plans in the next four to five years hopefully will be increasing the facility or building a new one. In order to do that, we need to be able to say, we have 10,000 people, six months, each quarter, we need to be able to show how many people come and use these facilities. We've asked that the payments come in on a more regular basis. Currently, we have some that pay every month, some that pay every six weeks, some that pay every quarter, some that pay when we nudge them in the hallway. And finally, because costs have increased, we have asked for a 10% increase in the rates that the instructors pay. Most of them understood where we were coming from and agreed. One or two did not and asked to speak with counsel. However, I wanted to bring it to you guys and see what your thoughts were on really all three of those. We afforded all the instructors a chance to come and speak to counsel, and let, y'all, let us know what they felt and how it would impact them. Dina?
Kay, Stanley texted me, and her granddaughter was having a function at school tonight, so she was not able to come, and I haven't heard from Rachel. Rachel was the reason why we put it on the agenda. So, but Sam did come, so.
And, you know, we started having these conversations in, was it October?
No, the first of November.
First of November, okay. So we started having the conversation so we could have some time for some back and forth, so that if they had other ideas or other options, that we could consider them. One of the things that we found out is perhaps the signing sheet that we were using wouldn't fit everybody, so we're certainly willing to be flexible on that. So we wanted to have these conversations in enough time so that we could make changes and have them in effect by January the first. Sam, did you want to say anything for or against?
Well, this is the first I heard of what the proposal was. Dina had told me that y'all were considering going up on the rent charts for the recreational center, and all I can say is, for new and CPR and AED, we've talked here for four and a half years, and I think we've been a good tenant. We give the tracking information already, at least 2019, only to Dina, tracking the city each student comes from, and I know we're responsive in paying our, y'all have been awesome. Donovan and Mayor and Wendell were awesome too, as far as, you know, scheduling the facility when we needed it. Now, we're willing to cancel classes if there's a special event or reunion. We've done that several times, but we probably taught more than two classes a month for four years, and generally pay 15% of whatever the students pay us. Now, we charge a little bit less than the other places to teach CPR versus AED, $50 for CPR, sometimes we only get two students. It's tough to go up pretty much on the rent that we're paying.
Right.
There's four other places that we teach that charges 15%, and it just works out pretty well for, I can figure 15% even without a calculator. But, I don't know, we've been good tenants, and we don't mess up the place nobody's drinking you alcohol or making a mess, and, I don't know, I think we've, y'all helped us a lot to grow as a teacher of first aid emergency response in the area. Sign-ups for here, there's usually three to five students per class, so, you know, we're not carrying home a whole bunch of money. And at 15%, you're not getting the standard rate that you would charge somebody that's having a reunion, or some dance here, or something like that, but we're pretty regular also as far as that goes, and we do appreciate it.
And I think the important thing is, is we, I don't want to or plan to or need to make money off the instructors. You guys are offering services to our citizens and the community at large, but we do need to kind of keep track of the rise in just general expenses. And, you know, 10% is a number that we started at. If council wants to go down to eight, or seven, or five, we can certainly do that. I just, it's part of a fiduciary responsibility to say, hey, our Georgia Power bill has gone up, you know, on, if you look on your Georgia Power usage right here, it's gone up consistently over the last year, and so, you know, where is that fine line between providing the services but not subsidizing the services?
I don't know if this helps, but Dina's helped me to find out on the tax system with the, or an address, whether they're living in town of Sharpsburg, or they just have a Sharpsburg post office address. And we're, you know, give them a percent discount to town of Sharpsburg residents.
Yes.
But I have to go back and individually check them by their address to do that. We all started that in March, and for March here, town of Sharpsburg hasn't attended for a lesson. Of course, we have not advertised the discount to the town residents either.
Well, in 2020, we planned to advertise for all of our classes with Facebook and social media, and we also have, we're going to revise our meeting board out here, so maybe we can start doing some more.
Yeah, and part of my conversations with each of the instructors includes doing things to help promote them, because if they're successful, we're going to be successful. So it's not going to be, everything's just going to be on them, you know? We're going to kind of take more of an active role in promoting the things that we have going on here.
How long do you classes utilize?
The CPR classes are two hours, the BLS for healthcare providers for nurses with impairments, three and a half hours.
And they used to meet on Mondays, but now that the senior services are here on Monday, they usually have two classes on Fridays from 8:00 till 11:00 at night, because they just have ongoing classes, is that right, Sam?
We generally schedule one daytime class on Friday, and one evening class on Friday. Sometimes the same day, this month it just happened to be the evening class for October, we actually do it the first, so we have two evening classes this month.
Have we determined what the cost is per hour?
No.
Y'all would be able to do that.
Through Georgia Power? I tried to get a daily rate, and we couldn't go daily. We can only go monthly with Georgia Power. So we can only do an average of a daily rate?
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
You got a daily rate for water, year time, year time? You can put together a cost per day, or a cost per hour. It'd be arbitrary, but you could do that.
Well, I'm saying all the supplies that I purchased for the facility, like toilet paper, towels, and hand soap, and, you know, all of the cleaning, all of that kind of good stuff.
Yeah, it'd be good to have that anyway, but I would think, believe we could put together, put together our cost and just look at recovering our cost, since it is most, like in his case, it's, you know, public service. And same thing with the, with the, that's, there's no charge for that, same thing with the elderly. At least you've got, if you haven't any of what your cost is, just recover your costs. That's my, that's my, we've talked about that.
So just, so counsel would like for us to go back and do a, get a little bit, a better cost breakdown per hour?
Sure.
And then figure it out from there and come back to recover?
Yeah, well, they had a recovery.
The costs?
Yeah. And just prorate it across the board. I mean, you know, an hour's an hour, whether you're making a quilt or doing the CPR or whatever.
Right.
And I think that's righteous if you're, what you're doing, just trying to recover your costs.
Well, the quilters is a nonprofit organization, when they make quilts, they actually donate those to the veterans, so we don't charge them.
Because they don't bring in any money here?
Yeah, they don't charge.
They don't charge the people to come in here, they just?
Do that as.
Come and gather.
Well, you know, you can make that decision case-by-case basis, but you need to know what the cost is. So that's my only point, know what it's going to, what it costs us to run this place. Quilts are usually done during the daytime, too, isn't it?
Yes, all of these, all of these occur during the day. These are all our daytimes, this doesn't factor in any, well...
Now, Rachel, she teaches dance three nights a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. She pays for her rental, which is totally separate, because she charges people to come in to that dance party, so that's, she has to pay our rental fees, not our instructor fees.
For weekdays, is what I meant.
And there's not a, there's not an issue of paying customer versus one of the, one of the classes, is there? There's not a, there's not a conflict between a potential paying customer, where you can make a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, versus, you know, versus somebody who's not paying. There's not a conflict during the daytime. I mean, the demand's not like that.
Well, I can't, I can't rent it out during the daytime because it's already promised out.
Yeah, because we've already got it booked with these, with these classes. Have we had a lot of demand during the day? For daytime meetings?
When we do, sometimes GMA wants to have a district, you know, meeting or something like that, and we can't because we've got, you know, classes. Lifeline comes in twice a year, the medical screening company that comes in. This year, they're coming in this Friday because we're booked during the day.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we will come back and calculate those costs and then share it with counsel and then go back to the vendors with that, I guess with an hourly figure? So if the dance class is here, say, 10 hours a week, it'll just be that figure times 10?
Yeah, as a, as a point of departure. Just recover your cost. Just recover your cost.
Okay, all right, well, we will start working on that. Any other questions from the public before we get out of the public comments section of the agenda? Sam, any final thoughts on it?
Okay.
Good. Counsel, any final thoughts on it? All right, okay. So moving on to the new business section.
Good evening.
I think it's the drawer that fell off.
Oh, okay.
It happened earlier when I was walking through.
One of the things that we always want to be able to do, or bring new activities and amenities.
We need to amend.
Oh, yes. So I'm sorry, we need to amend, I would like to get a motion to amend the agenda. We need to discuss an ordinance, adding, hold on, let me get to it, high-efficiency plumbing fixtures to our building code ordinance. So if I can get a motion for that, please?
A motion to hand out.
Yeah, I'm about to hand it down. All right, so I have a motion on the, my first motion.
So Cynthia's just approved and amended the agenda?
Yes, yes. And I need a second so that we can amend the agenda to discuss the ordinance.
Say.
All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, so this ordinance is to require in new construction or remodels, high-efficiency plumbing. This would have to go through a second reading, so it would not be finalized tonight, but the reason that this is important, if you looked on the second page, number five, the very first line, and to adopt OCGA 8-2-3. the requirements for toilets, showerheads, faucet and other high efficiency plumbing fixtures. The reason this is important is because as we are looking to get, um, if you want, as we are looking to get financing for any public infrastructure, water or wastewater infrastructure, this has to be part of our building code. They, we have to require high efficiency plumbing fixtures in order to be eligible for any grants or loans. Um, as we are hoping to add sewer, uh, sometime in twenty twenty, I want to go ahead and get this on the book so we are prepared for any grant or loan applications that hopefully eventually will happen. Um, and I didn't find out that this was one of the requirements until right before Thanksgiving, so that's why we're bringing it up now, not really last minute, but
Well, Brad emailed this to us over the holidays.
Yes, and, and
Just now getting it printed out.
So basically what we're doing is, is with your approval tonight, this will be the first reading. We'll come back and look at it again next month, and then if council chooses, then we can pass it and adopt it as an ordinance. And that will just fulfill an eligibility requirement for, um, uh, gee, for the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority.
Is this a new ordinance or an amendment to one?
This is an amendment to one. So all they're doing is they're adding OCGA eight, two, three, and the requirements for toilets, showerheads, faucets and other efficient plumbing fixtures.
That's only changes number five, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Because it says, "and to adopt."
So there's no need to take any action on it now?
Uh, no.
We do have to have a vote.
Yeah, we do need to have a vote to approve it for the first reading.
We need a second reading.
Make a motion to accept it.
Mm-hmm. Stan has the first.
I have a second.
Cynthia has a second. All in favor?
Wait a minute.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed.
Opposed? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You mentioned only plumbing, but I see it mentions electrical, so you mentioned, um, efficiency, water efficiency, I understand that, but what's the electrical part of this?
Let me see. Where, where do you see that?
It says the plumbing and electrical requirements. Page two, row under number nine.
Nothing has changed.
I don't like that answer today, I'll find out tomorrow. That's good.
Nothing changed except number five to add the requirements.
Oh, so, oh, so is this, oh, okay, so only time is changed.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, so going back into the new business on the agenda, um, one of the things that we always look to do are to provide opportunities to bring things to town and to bring new things to town. Um, we have an opportunity in April to bring the Serenby Playhouse to Sharpburg to put on a production of The Jungle Book. Um, it is a traveling production that they do. Uh, it, they will come out to different locations, they will set up, they will perform the play. Um, it's gonna be a, it would be a great event, um, if we choose to have it. Um, it will bring people in, we can involve the local school system. Uh, Serenby Playhouse is very well respected in the theater, uh, circles, not just in, uh, our area, but also across the state and nationally. Um, we would use their production to incorporate the high school. Um, it would be something that would engage and, and bring in the youth, and it would give them an opportunity to come to town hall and to be part of the, the community center and the recreation center, um, the park and pavilion. Um, and it's gonna be, I think it's, I think it would be a great thing for the town. Um, we would have ticket sales to defray the cost of the production. And in, in addition to splitting the ticket sales, we would also, they would also make a donation to East Caluita's Drama Club, which is called Echo Stage. So not only are we bringing people to town, not only are we, uh, bringing cultural things that have never been done here before, we are involving the high school and they're gonna get a, a donation out of it. I've been talking with the, um, drama teacher instructor. He is excited and, and is intrigued by the potential of what all the students could do. Um, and to me, it's just a win-win. Uh, the cost of the production is twenty-five hundred dollars, but some of that is gonna be given to the high school, and we will defray that through ticket sales.
We're looking at the first weekend in April, is that it?
Mm-hmm, April fourth and fifth. So we would have a show at ten o'clock on Saturday morning, at two o'clock Saturday afternoon, and then another matinee on Sunday. Uh, that time slot is currently open, uh, on our calendar. Um, and we, i- in, for families, it's better to do these during the day, uh, for families, because this is a, uh, a, a family show. So it's gonna be better to do it during the day rather than doing it night like we would for, you know, most normal theater productions. This could be paid for out of our twenty thirteen splosts. Uh, we, we have more than enough. Uh, we would only have to put down twenty-five percent of the total for a deposit, and then the rest would be defrayed through ticket costs, and we'd just, we would pay whatever balance there is.
Not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars?
Not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, correct.
Does, does the donation to the school come before or after the twenty-five hundred dollars?
It will come out of the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. It's, it's a twenty-five hundred dollar risk. Where, where are they gonna, when will they physically do it? Inside here or outside?
No, they, they would do it outside. They would probably start in the pavilion, and then they'd have a couple of scenes there, and then a couple of scenes around the gazebo, and then a couple of scenes, like maybe in the parking lot, and then maybe one or two scenes in here, and then they would go back out there. So, so they actually move around. And it's, it's very, i- it's very unique, it's very engaging. Um,
Well, that time of the year, of course, anytime, but, uh, they got plans if it rains?
Yes, this, this, the inside is available if it rains.
Okay.
And, and they would, of course, they'd have to shrink it down some, but they could still do it on the inside if it rained. And they have, oh, and they have their own, um, sound and lighting equipment. They wouldn't really need much lighting, but they have their own sound equipment. I guess they'd have like little lapel mics and speakers secreted around so everybody can hear.
Could that not be done in a church? If it were raining, it'd be a bigger facility.
Oh, I didn't think about that. I have talked to the church about maybe doing refreshments or being involved either with ushering or parking or serving refreshments in here as a, a fundraiser for them possibly. So it's gonna be more than just
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Us putting on the show, it's gonna be true community involvement. And honestly, with us having three shows, I'd like to find other nonprofits that, that might want to come and be a part of it. But that's a good idea about having the, the church as a backup, backup location.
Yeah, you could do the sanctuary pretty well.
Mm-hmm. Oh, absolutely.
With that being said, before we pass this, do you have to get it okay with the church first?
Um.
I would think you'd wanna do it anyway, and that, and have that church option, that's just kind of a
Mm-hmm.
Happy surprise.
Mm-hmm, as a backup to the backup. And I've already talked with them about being involved in it from the youth group side, as far as doing refreshments or whatever. Um, I mean, but they, they've been open and willing to do, you know, pretty much wherever we bring them. And I really think, and, and part of the reason I want to engage the high school, especially the drama club, is those are the theater people. Those are the folks that are gonna wanna come and bring their families and buy the tickets. So we're gonna have them help promote it for us. And so that way, if they're helping us sell the tickets and earning their donation that way, it's just gonna, you know, sell the tickets that much faster and defray our costs. And once again, you know, this is just like the instructors, I'm not looking to make money off of it. I don't wanna go too deep into the hole, but I don't mind going in the hole a little bit.
Just wanna do something.
If, if I'm doing it for, for the community and, and, and for
What's, what's the proposed cost of a ticket?
Um, it's gonna be, I think, twelve dollars for an adult, eight dollars for, um, a, a senior and student, and kids under five, I think, are free. So it is very reasonable. I, I was thinking about fifteen to eighteen dollars, and they said, no, you wanna keep it around ten to twelve. So probably twelve and eight, or ten and eight, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I wish that I had brought my, I had a ticket breakdown, and I could tell you how many tickets we have to sell. I've got it broken down on my computer. I could tell you how many tickets we have to sell to, uh, to, to break even.
Around two hundred and fifty.
Over three shows, yes. Yeah, that's about right. And then, um, uh, the two fifty divided by three, you're looking at
About seventy-five.
Yeah, about seventy-five per. And that's only seven adults and, you know, a handful of kids. So, you know.
Sounds reasonable.
You can put the muscle on your family coming to that.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, you better believe, I'm, I'm nudging them to get over here.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
That sounds like a good deal. That's the kind of thing we need to be doing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm, uh, I, I, I'm really excited.
Play that they were gonna do?
Live game.
It's The Jungle Book.
The Jungle Book.
I don't dare tell my granddaughter about that yet.
I'm like, the motion we go forward with it?
Yeah, I second that.
All right, we have a, a first and a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank y'all very much. This is gonna be, this, th- this is gonna be a great thing for us. Uh, the only, the only thing that I'm worried about is the weather, but even with that, we have backup plans, and now we have a backup plan to our backup plan, so, I'm, uh,
We'll get together on, um, April fourth and fifth.
Are the dates for it. So thank y'all.
What were your, what was your date again, your window?
That's on the
April fourth and April fifth.
That's on the, well, paper there.
And, you know, and, and in talking with the guy from, um, Serenby, this really is just the beginning. I, I could see to where, um, they could do puppet shows at the library, or do dramatic readings in the library park, or kids' activities with set building. I mean, there's just so many directions that this can go in, and this is the kind of community engagement that is really gonna take advantage down the road. Um, the next action, or the next item doesn't require any action, it is an FYI. Um, we have totaled up the sign votes. We have, we had over three hundred votes between the online and the in-center voting, and the winning signs were B and then G. Um, this isn't a really good copy.
No, it's not. That's our nice copy.
Yeah, that's the, our copy early is much to be desired, but it's, I like both of them because one is a more contemporary, and then the other is more traditional. Um, and this would just be used for just general signage, um, as we're doing event parking or public notice, uh, signs, we would just kind of use this as the template. Um, we will eventually do new entrance signs to the town, uh, but that would be a separate item probably, probably in the spring. I, I think we've got some other stuff coming up for January, February and March before we get to something like this. Um, Dina, did you want to talk about the, uh, floor cleaning quotes that we got?
Um, we've had some complaints about how dirty the floor is. Um, you can mop it, and it still is very dirty. You can have white socks on or white clothes, like some of our kids do, that come to birthday parties, and they're nasty when they leave, um, even after you mop. Um, I bought brand new mop heads, so, you know, we, I take the old ones home and bleach them out, wash them and bring them back and stuff like that, so I try to do all of that kind of maintenance stuff on the, our side. But it really needs to be professionally cleaned. They've never been cleaned, um, and they are terrible. And with the cleaning in here in the kitchen, they're also going to strip the storage room. Uh, the county has also agreed to, uh, hang up our sheet rock and do some painting back there for us, and they're actually gonna build another cabinet for the senior services supplies, so that's gonna help us out. So we wanna get that storage room, which is awful, cleaned up. The floor has never been stripped and waxed, I don't think, and our bathrooms here need to be stripped and waxed as well.
Um, do you wanna talk to them a little bit about some of the options we went through before we came back to cleaning it? Cause I know we had looked at completely redoing the floors, but the feedback we got was
The floors were not in that bad a shape. They just need a good cleaning. And all three of the people that, that, um, came and quoted on this job said the same thing. I wouldn't get rid of these floors. Our dancers do not wanna get rid of these floors.
Correct.
Because they're cushiony to them.
Yep.
And they cleaned it this morning. They clean it on Mondays and Fridays, and it's still awful, awful, awful.
They won't mess it up, they won't mess it up scrubbing it with a machine.
Well, um, I don't know anything about the Matthews Cleaning and the Peachtree Carpet Cleaners, but the guy that actually came in from Jones Carpet Cleaning, he's been in the industry for thirty years, and they would come in and professionally scrub it. Um, he said it would not damage it, so that's who I was going to recommend, the middle, Jones Carpet Cleaning, because he also, um, works at the hospital, and he does all of their floors too, at the Piedmont, um, Piedmont Hospital in there.
Mm-hmm.
Is this just a one-time fee?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and this is, you know, unfortunately, this is some of that regular maintenance, uh, that has to occur. And, and these are, you know, some of the costs that we're looking to recover. Um, and it's not, and, and just to be fair to the instructors, it's not completely on their backs. I mean, we have a lot more traffic in here other than our weekday instructors. But at the same time, it's, it's regular maintenance.
The third, um, company, Peachtree Carpet Cleaners, actually threw in cleaning our carpet in the front lobby and, in my office area. Then, I mean, that's not too bad up there, but, you know.
Anything sort of about not leaving it shabby and slippery and
Oh, they won't, they won't be able to do a wax on it because it's not hardwood, or it's, I'm not even sure.
What is it, laminate?
Yeah, yeah.
And in fact, the dancer said they, it does not need to be the real slick surface.
Yeah.
Because they would slip.
Yeah, they're just going to, um, clean the community center floor with the kitchen or scrub it, and then they're gonna strip the storage room and two bathrooms inside and re-wax them.
Let's see, how long would it take? A day, two days?
A day, two days at the most, and I would think they could get in here one day and, and do it.
How far out would we need to schedule it?
Um, anytime this month.
Anytime this month. Do you think we could do it on, could they come at twelve?
Well, Kay has canceled some of her classes this month.
Okay.
For the morning, so, um, the only thing I would really have to do is probably cancel dance that night, if it's Tuesday through Thursday. Monday, you know, is kind of tough. Um, senior services won't be here the week of Christmas, so that maybe would also be available for them as well, so I'll work with them.
Yeah, so maybe do it the week of Christmas, when we don't have a regular classes.
Well, that might be tough.
Would it, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll work with that, though.
Okay. And what would the funding source be for this? Would it be splosts, or are we gonna, are we gonna try to spend down some maintenance money, or?
Well, we've already spent our maintenance money, but I do suggest that we use splosts for it.
Okay. And just so you guys are clear, we're still working on the twenty thirteen splosts. We have not dipped into the twenty nineteen splosts yet. We're still working off twenty thirteen.
Yeah, we have thirty-seven, seven in splosts thirteen and fifty- Yeah, we have thirty-seven, seven in sploosed thirteen and fifty-seven, nine eighty-five in nineteen sploosed. And in our repairs and maintenance for the building, we have two hundred dollars left for the year.
Tell me again why you like Jones versus Matthews?
Well, because of his credentials. He was telling me that he worked for the hospitals and, you know, they have a strict code on their flooring, so. But we can try the cheapest or we can go with the most expensive?
Kinda like the, like you, if he cleans hospitals, he knows what he's doing.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion we go with Jones Carpet Cleaning then.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank y'all. Okay, uh, the next thing that we have is a, is this a true variance request or are they just asking for a new sign?
No, they were just asking, um, for a variance. They haven't made an application or anything like that or paid for the variance. But, um, we wanted to see if they would, uh, council would approve the variance.
But I don't see what the, what the variance is because this is not any.
Going down instead of up instead of down.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, I believe that there are, um, some sign restrictions, um, in our ordinance and I believe it was about the size.
You know what I bet it is? I bet it's the existing.
It's the size, yeah.
This is, I bet it's the existing pole. I bet that has something to do with it.
Say that again.
I bet it's the existing pole. I bet the, 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 the ordinance wants it to be lower rather than high up in the air like that. That may be what it is.
Well, according to this, it look like it's gonna be lower.
Well.
I don't think the sign, um, the post is moving. It was the actual sign path.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Was, is the existing sign out of compliance with the ordinance?
No, no. But he asked for a variance. He called and just briefly talked about it, um. So, um.
I don't see, I don't see where he's asking for anything.
Well, he's, he's asking to change the sign. Um, you can see where the other one on the bottom has three different pricing. This one only has the regular. So he's, the sign's gonna be shorter, um, but that's the only thing that I know of that. And I really don't know what, I have not had a, um, variance for a sign. And I did not read this over the Thanksgiving holiday, so I do apologize. It says here, um, non-conforming signs. I, I don't really know what I'm looking for in this ordinance, so I'm sorry.
Well, what we can do is we can get with Safe Bill and have them look out, cause that's, that's who we would permit for and they would do the inspections and all that, correct?
Yes.
So maybe let us, maybe we should go back and do some research and then if it is gonna require variance, then they can come to us before a- at the next meeting because I, I don't know that, that they need a variance, do they? Not with them going down in size. And so otherwise it'd just be up, the straight just permitting.
Well, that's what, so, that's like I said, if, if, if the existing sign is within, within the code.
Well, apparently he didn't meet code because he called to get a variance, so.
Doesn't meet code.
It, uh, to me, I think the changes must be different than what are exist- I don't, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. So. I should've done some homework over the holidays.
Well, no, no, you know, you should, no, you shouldn't have to work over the holidays.
This came from me, this came, um, on Monday, November the twenty-fifth. So that's when I put it on and I think I sent it out on Tuesday, the package, so.
Yeah, so, no, it's, don't, don't apologize for not working over the weekend.
But I think it had to do something with the height of the sign.
Okay, well, let's just get with Safe Bill and take a deeper dive in the ordinance and then bring it back. I realize he wants to get started, but, you know, he sent it two days before holiday. So officially no action taken on that one. Okay. Uh, going in, so do we have any questions or comments, Councilor Public on the new business?
Okay, yeah. Something. That was talking one time while I was on the council floor. I think you wanna talk about redoing the sign ordinance just to simplify it somewhat. Since we're not the city of Atlanta, Peachtree City, to make it simple.
Was that ever done?
Nothing's ever done about, do you remember that?
Vaguely, but I don't think anything was done.
None was done, but it was talk about redoing that whole ordinance, so it would be not so complicated since we don't have.
Needs to be simplified.
This is it. I can't tell you how many pages, but it was adopted in two thousand and two.
Blue ported out during election before last, that we got some stuff in that is illegal, remember?
Um, I don't, I wouldn't say that it's illegal. It certainly, if it was enforced, it could be challenged.
But you remember.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, I absolutely do. And what Brad said was there have been some Supreme Court decisions since the ordinance was approved that could be legally pliable, which is part of the reason we, you know, we loosen up on the regulations during the election season simply because. Mm-hmm, yes. Yep, they're shifting, yeah, so.
So what we'll do at this same time, why don't we look into a new ordinance and kinda mirror image maybe?
We could, but if we're gonna redo the ordinance, that's gonna require the two readings, it's gonna require all this public input. So before we decide to start redoing the ordinance, we just need to look at the timing of everything. Because if it's a simple fix to just approve this and then we can do that, I just don't wanna hold anybody up. If, you know, but. Yes, I'm sorry. Yep. Yes. Yes, mhm, yes, I remember that.
I wonder how that happened.
There, there was just, uh, they had, it was the height. They said you can't have any this high, so they built it this high. Yep, and then they literally did it overnight. Yes, and, and people were living, yep.
Oh, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, and, and I wanna say after that went up, I look back at ours and it is, uh, you, you can't do it here, well, what happened over there, but you're right, that's those unintended consequences of it. So. All right, anything else? Okay, going on to old business. Um, this is our end of year twenty nineteen budget. Um, Dina, do you wanna pick up and talk about this?
Yeah, I wasn't able to do the bank statements by the time council meeting tonight, so I went back into my spreadsheet and I, um, fixed them to where I paid all of my December bills. And these are the bottom line numbers on the very bottom of the, where it says budget remaining. On the far right-hand side, that's about how much money we should left, have left over at the end of this year.
The seventeen, seventeen thousand, two eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. To the good.
To the good.
Yes.
So that says that we've only spent out ninety-one percent of our budget. And on the left-hand side will be, um, received a hundred and eighteen percent of our budget.
And so we're, we have received thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred more than we planned to. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So we've received in about two forty and paid out about a hundred and eighty-five.
Versus two oh two across the board.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
You're really, you're really fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand better off.
Mm-hmm, yep. And, and that, that's about one year worth of sploosed revenue for us too.
Yeah, that is our.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's right about what it would be.
Yeah.
So, so Dina, congratulations. Um, Dina does an excellent job tracking expenditures and slotting them in their proper categories. Um, and, you know, she does a great job with it. So, Dina, kudos to you for, for managing us onto the plus side. Well into the black.
And also too, um, in January, uh, at our January meeting, we'll, we'll, um, adopt our budget for two thousand and twenty. And, um, also we'll have a work session prior to our regular, uh, meeting, so we can discuss all of that. And, um, that's it. And then I'll have the final numbers.
January meeting will be the sixth, is that correct?
Yes, yes. So there's, we don't need any action for that.
Yeah, this is just an FYI to show y'all where we are. Um, and of course, if you have had any thoughts since the November meeting on the budget or priorities for next year, um, certainly, you know, let's go ahead and, and, and talk about them briefly. So Dina and I can incorporate that into our planning because we're gonna be work over the next month, or three weeks, I guess, because of Christmas. Um, we're gonna be working up the, the proposed twenty twenty budget with, um, some of the priorities that we talked about in November. And those are reflected in, on the right-hand side where we've got the notes on increased budget, increase, increase, move money to person, increase. Um, move a thousand dollars for new, I don't know, fixtures or furniture.
Well, what I'll do is I'll give you the whole amount of money that we need to increase and how much money we have left and you just approve it and I'll do all of the applications.
So I think basically we're gonna go from two oh two to about two oh eight or two ten, two ten, okay, okay. So we're gonna increase our overall budget about eight thousand dollars for next year, for twenty twenty. And of course, the way that we budget is conservative, you know, that's part of the reason we have a fifty seven thousand dollar to the good, or fifty-four thousand, sorry, uh, to the good is because we do budget conserva- conservatively. But, uh, as we look to do things over the next three or four years, we're gonna need, we're gonna need the, the cash reserves that we're, that we have been building up for the last four to six years.
Hopefully I'll get a lot more tax revenue. When is the tax bill due? December or somewhere?
Uh, December eighth, I think is when, eighth or sixteenth, I think is when.
What, property taxes?
Yes. Oh, is it today? Oh, okay. And then my bank must have a special arrangement, cause they're talking about it's gonna be deducted on the eighth. Well, uh-oh.
No, they do today.
I don't know. Okay, well, cool. Well, good. And of course, I will say that our, our property taxes are not as, as much as people would think. Last year, we only had, um, about seventeen thousand in, in property tax, real property tax. Um, so, but every little bit helps though.
And we haven't had a lot of payments so far this year.
Hmm.
We have very little coming in, good call, we the county. So every time I go to my mailbox, I'm like, please, Jeff, please.
Well, let's, let's talk to Mr. Farrell and see if, if that's.
He sends them every fifteen days.
Oh.
They're not due yet, so.
Hmm, okay, well.
We'll see.
Well, uh, we'll see. Uh, are there any questions from council on the twenty nineteen budget? All right, um, the next remaining item of old business are our traffic study options. Uh, if you flip over to the matrix that we've got here, um, we have gone back, done some further research. Um, and we've got it divided up now into humps, cushions and tables. Uh, conversation with council on previous occasions and others in the, uh, business have indicated that, indicated the tables are the best way to go. They're the ones that have six feet or so of a ramp up, six feet or so flat and another six feet going down. Um, you can see the, the apples to apples, fairly close apples to apples comparisons across, um, four different providers. Um, this does not include installation, but a reliable figure for, as reliable as it can get, is for twenty to fifty percent of the, um, product cost is what will go towards installation. So you can look at this and add about, so basically about ten thousand dollars on the high end for installation. What I would like to see us do tonight, um, is pick one of these four options. Um, let us start pricing that out and then give us an installation dollar amount to get to. Uh, the location for the six tables would be two North Tarantine, two South Tarantine and then one each on East and West Main.
Um, pardon me one second.
Yes.
On this spreadsheet.
Please correct.
I'm sorry?
If I have misspoken, please correct.
Well, I think I missed a, um, um, Piedmont paving and Transcore, it says includes installation and delivery. It does not actually include installation. It includes, um, installation hardware and tools, but it does not include installation.
So the Piedmont does include installation because that is the actual permanent ones. It's Transcore that does not include installation and delivery. Because Transcore is the tempor- not temporary, the, um, the, the, I guess, the temporary ones.
We don't wanna be temporary.
Yeah, 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 well, I mean, they're, they're, they're bolted down, but they're removable. You can go back. Uh, except for Piedmont. Piedmont is actual asphalt.
So that will stay?
Yes, it would.
Is that what we want?
Um, it, you know, it, that's kinda the crux of the matter. I mean, if we, I mean, if we don't want it, we can always mill the asphalt ones back down, but the consensus from council is to go with the ones that, that you could remove if we needed to.
Which is all of them except for Piedmont.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Why is traffic supplies and distribution so much higher?
I think because they are buying them from Transcore and they're adding their markup to it.
Well, let's just rule them out right now.
Yes, yes, and that was, that was our sticker shock. Um, and of course, it also includes the, the hardware and, and signage for it as well, but it's, yeah. My, um, y'all know me by now, I hate to go for the cheapest option just because it's the cheapest option. Um,
Where does money be coming from?
Uh, sploosed, twenty thirteen sploosed.
So it's there?
It's there, yes, sir. It's there, yes, sir. Uh huh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's gonna be one fifty yards ahead of it, and then one right there at it. No. Yeah, they, they are, they are. Yeah, they, 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 um, they don't like it for several reasons. And, and I understand where they're coming from, but at the same time, we owe it to our citizens to be safe and to control the speed and, and all that.
Speaking of citizens, you don't have to have a hearing at all for any of this? A public hearing?
We've had a public hearing on this every, every council meeting for eighteen months.
Well, I'm talking about an announced public hearing. It doesn't count if you just say the council meeting, you don't have to, if it's required by law, it has to be an announced public hearing.
I don't.
And I don't have any idea.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I mean, we can ask Brad, but I don't, I, I really don't think so considering how much we've talked about it and how much we've presented it. And in fact, didn't we have a public hearing? Was it, was it last week? Or la- sorry.
That was a work session.
Last month, we had a work session, okay. Okay, to where we talked about it. I mean, there have been plenty of notice, we've. Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't either, but. But I do think the signage would have to be put up, you know, with advance notice. But we'll double check with Brad on that.
Well, you'll say, ask him about other things too, if you would.
Uh huh.
Something else came up, and you said you had to have a public hearing. There are a couple of you have to have regarding this, that some yes or no for public hearings about the. We had two or three options. We had the, the daddy, the cul-de-sac option, and we had the one-way option. And we have this option, so we've got three things. Find out of each one of those, do you, don't have to have a hearing, all of the same phone call.
Well, you read how much it was gonna cost.
Yeah.
Just read your cul-de-sac, right? Did you all read that?
Hundred and fifty thousand, roughly.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we need to go that route right now.
I think we need to move on this, like, we've been talking about it for a long time, so it's something, either yay or nay, let's go with it.
So.
Put this to bed.
So, do y'all wanna go with the ones that, that we can adjust the positioning if we need to? Or, 'cause obviously the Piedmont paving is, is, is right in line with the, with the rubber, with the rubber, uh, 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 speed tables. Do you want the ones that we can pull up if, i- i- if the occasion arises for it? Or do we want the, the one that we have to mill down in order to get rid of it?
Spending this kind of money, I don't see, buy the one you have to tear up.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Well, and part of that is because of the last time that, that we put them in, and granted, it's a different product, but the last time we put speed bumps in, the complaints started coming in almost immediately, didn't they? With the, the noise and the.
Why did they take them up?
Because the county was gonna repave them, and we had to remove them to get the roads repaved. Julie?
At my homeowner's meeting, they talked about the speed bumps.
Uh huh.
And the ones, the removable ones. They said it invites vandals in who are not satisfied with the speed bumps, and they miraculously are removed.
Okay, so these are speed tables that are probably, probably as long as this set of tables right here. If them vandals can come and remove it, then you know what, there's not someone, I'm gonna try to stop removing them anyway.
Now, these are, these don't have the gaps on, right?
Correct, these do not.
They're solid.
Yes, sir.
We'll be until they start removing our speed bumps.
They blew up our pool. They quit, uh, one, one fourth of July, they quit, uh, cherry bombs, fireworks into the drains of the pool, and caused thirteen thousand dollar worth of damage. And next year, they had Coweeta Police there.
Man.
Nice.
This is why we can't have nice things. So, are y'all thinking to go with the asphalt ones provided by Piedmont? Is that your? No?
Cause like you said, the complaints will start coming in again, we can't.
Do anything about it.
So Transcore has the removable ones?
Uh huh, uh, parking place and Transcore are both removable.
But one includes installation, the other doesn't?
Um, no, Transcore does not include, that, that, that is a mis-hype.
Well, that was the one?
Does not include.
So neither one of those two have included installation?
Correct.
Well, if they're the same thing, why not go with the parking place?
Okay, and those are nine, and we have twenty-foot streets out here. It's nineteen-six wide, and then ten-six long. With the three-foot rise, three-foot rise, and then three, or three-three rise, three-three across, and three-three drop.
That's fourteen thousand dollars difference.
Uh huh.
Instead of gonna have to pay for installation?
Yeah.
Who would we hire to fix the location?
I don't know. We might could hire Piedmont, Piedmont might do it.
If quarterly they won't charge, you can go with them.
Say, I don't know. And you know, and I, and I thought about that, but I don't know what the liability would be.
Well, I don't think you'd just ask them what it costs.
They might have trapped them, might have got the supply from Transcore, and the price is different, so.
Yeah.
So, it would be in the same boat with that one.
And I'll be honest, a lot of these places seem to buy from Traffic Logics. They, 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 which is one of the ones that's up above. Because I've noticed when I was looking at the different prices, and if you look at your, in, in your packet with the things, you'll see that you'll, you'll see the rubber form or Traffic Logics logo on some of the other quotes. So I think some of these places are just resellers. And I'll have to look back through my notes and see, some of these can recommend installers, but I don't remember which one specifically said that.
Too bad we can't put a gate at each entrance. Like a label. Everybody put code in for that. I mean, it's cheaper, a gate.
Okay, gated community.
Yeah, there you go. We definitely remove that easily.
Right.
So we're gonna move forward with this, that's what we want to do tonight.
I'm, I'm ready if y'all are.
Well, let's do it, 'cause we've been talking about it.
Okay, so, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I guess we go with the parking place.
All right, at the locations indicated in the traffic study?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor. Yeah, I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
I don't know, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Put a lot of, plus some complaints gonna come.
Well, it is, but it's also the least amount of the lots of money, and if it is a problem, pull it up and remove it. Do what now?
She's a little cautious.
I said, no coaching from the sidelines.
See, I don't live on the street, so I don't know exactly what the problem is. And when, like, earlier, when I, on the way here, I didn't think I was going as fast as I was, and I saw that little, seeing I'm gonna tell you I'm going thirty, I'm like, good God, I was, I was just coasting, so. I don't know, and I just, I don't know, what kind of complaints we're gonna get behind it?
Well, if they don't like it, they can go Highway fifty-four.
Well, I'm not talking about them, I'm not talking about them.
Shame on you, you don't even live on the streets.
I'm talking about like them, like Tom and his Polly, I mean.
But I mean, if they don't like the speed, I don't want them speeding through here.
I don't either, but that's not a very nice thing to say, let them go another way.
No, if they don't like the speeding humps, that's, that's what we're trying to do, get the speakers off the road.
We don't want them to not come through this way to town, so. Um, I don't know, so if it would be a permit on, what happened, I don't know.
Well, so, well, see, this one is not a permanent one.
I know, I know, I just. I don't know.
Do you oppose?
I say, let's get a gate.
Or do you wanna?
Get a gate?
I don't know that, I don't know that a gate.
I get less complaints with the table?
Yes, I do too.
But you hear, when they're bottom of their car.
Y'all, y'all okay with this? I'll go with my councilman.
All in favor?
I mean.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yes, we have to find somebody to put them on.
Yeah, and do y'all want to approve up to fifty percent of the cost for installation?
Will it be that much?
It'd be thirty.
Well, he said twenty, he said twenty to fifty percent for installation is a good ballpark.
Well, you got, you got installation, you got signage.
Yes.
And you see, you probably, probably pretty much double it.
Well, the signage, I don't think, signage isn't gonna be that bad. We, we can buy off-the-shelf, off-the-shelf signage.
Well, we can actually order those through Coweeta County, we just have to pay their cost, no?
Uh, well, I, hmm, I don't, I don't know, I'd rather just buy them off the shelf.
Okay.
And in fact, we got speed humps, the head signs out there from the last time we had them.
Okay.
Still got them?
Yes, we still got them.
I'm trying to get confirmation on Saturday with the.
So we still have signs?
Uh huh, from the last time.
Well, they had to take them up.
Yes, when we had to take them up.
So we're looking at, what, thirty?
Yeah, probably a total of thirty grand.
Still cheaper than Traffic Supplies and Distribution?
Uh huh, oh yeah. Yep.
Well, could've went with Piedmont, and they'd be permanent for that price.
Right.
Yeah, but you see, I used to see what you're saying, I mean, only four thousand more would be permanent, but.
And this installed, and if we ever have to take them up, you're just gonna have to get a jackhammer and move them.
Yeah, it'd be a lot, yeah, but if we ever did have to remove them, it would probably be.
Costs that same amount to remove it.
Yeah, if not more. Cause I could see them saying, well, I think the price of removal is gonna be, and we don't have much choice in, in, in that.
I got another question. When the mayor took the other ones up, you said when they were resurfacing. I, I thought there were complaints too. Will the county still resurface our streets now?
If, if, if we remove them, and then they'll come back.
No, no, if you don't remove them.
No, they won't.
So they'll never come in and resurface our streets again?
Not, if there's, if they are there, they won't, but if we remove them, they will.
So it definitely would be permanent.
So you're gonna have to take them up to have the streets redone?
Yes, uh huh, yes, ma'am, because these are, these sit on top of the streets that are there.
Then we have to pay the same amount again to re- get them restored.
It hasn't been that long since, I mean, it's been a long time since this street should have been redone. It may not be far off from having them done again.
Hmm, no, we're probably a good five to ten years before we have to have the streets redone. The, the main thoroughfares, there are a couple of smaller streets that, that we need to have patched and looked at, but main and Tarrentine.
It's been a long time, Larry Hyde was still on the council when they resurfaced.
It was.
How long ago that was, that's been fifteen years.
It's, yes, yeah, it's been, I, I'm, I was thinking twelve.
It ain't been going that long.
Larry Hyde was on the council.
I know, but I mean, he ain't been going that long.
Well, he's been going a good while.
Four years, six years, I don't know.
I, I think it's been about twelve years since they were done, because we had just moved up there, and we've been up there fifteen years, so.
Stop it. I'm being sleepy.
Yeah, okay, so, do y'all wanna go ahead and approve, uh, up to fifty percent? Basically ten thousand for installation, and if it's more than that, I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, move that motion.
So, Tom moves up to fifty percent installation costs. And then, Stan, you have the second, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, so.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, thirty thousand. All right, um, the next thing in the packet was just the ballpark from DOT for the cul-de-sac.
No. You said it was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Do what?
Put that file thirteen, is that name?
Yeah, yeah, circular filing cabinet. Okay, so, polling of council, I will start at the far end, Mr. Teagle.
Got the, uh, juvenile guy coming in, probably Saturday to help us with the container.
I've also asked if he could, y'all could put all the Christmas decorations in the gazebo.
Something aside out there?
Yeah, and, um, Julie, Randy and I, Monday, I have some training with Coweeta County Business License, and after I get finished with that, we're gonna come in and decorate the tree for the gazebo and from here, so.
And you want all, you want all the old ones set out there too?
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna probably trash what we, yeah.
All right, we'll do that.
Cause we've got all new, um, decorations, and also too, the Shurpsburg Peacemaker Quilters has donated two hundred dollars to help us with the decorations as far as the ornaments for the tree. So I've purchased all the ornaments, and we're good to go. We just need to go to Elizabeth and get all the wreaths and some pre-lit garland, if you, can you bring that down here? Is there a lot, is?
Oh, I will.
Okay, yeah, she said she'd even come down Monday, Elizabeth, and get and help us, so she's gonna have to squeeze somewhere to stay.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Yeah, that'll be awesome. That way we can go ahead and start decorating the gazebo with all the pre-lit garland. And actually, I asked Officer Kenny if he could have his guys help us put some around the town, lamp posts on Tarrentine and Main. Um, I think there's plug-ins and everything's pre-lit, so I think that'll look nice.
Okay. Stan, anything, who sent you?
No, that's.
All righty. Dina? Clerk's comments?
Yes, uh, like I said, the Quilters has donated the two hundred dollars for Christmas decorations, and Julie and I have also got all of our business license, uh, sent out last week. And our alcohol license have been sent out, and all three have paid, so.
Oh!
Yay, so alcohol licensing is done, I've just got a print-up, I got the background checks, thank you for picking them up, um, this week. So I'll be able to, um, get those two alcohol licensing out for the two stores on fifty-four. And, um, all the business license will be due February the eighteenth, so we'll be working hard.
The gentleman from the hot dog place got his license?
Yes, yes, he got his twenty nineteen and his twenty twenty separately, so that all worked out for him too. Plus, actually, over the weekend, he, um, called with the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and he's been approved to go ahead and get the door, the, the wall is going to be cut out so he can make suite A and B suite A. So now he's gonna be opening up a pizza place on that side. Well, actually, he's not gonna have seats in the sh- suite A, but all the seats are gonna be, um, in suite B with TVs and a bar. He's gonna have beer, um, beer and wine, and pizza, he's adding pizza, so.
Oh, good.
He's making a big move, so.
Hope he does well.
Yeah, we're, we're, the fire marshal still has to give us okay before I can give him a building permit, and I think we'll spend quickly. Everything so far's worked out.
Good deal. Okay, so as far as the mayor's minutes, I've only got, uh, three real quick things, uh, before we go into executive session. Uh, first thing is between now and December fourteenth, uh, we are collecting warm hats, gloves, and new or light new coats. You can drop them off at Town Hall or at the library. And then what we're planning on doing, um, is we will put, um, outreach materials and, and small sundry items into the pocket, so when they are cold, we'll put it on. Uh, they stick their hands in their pockets, and they'll have a referral to Coweeta Forest or the, the, the bridge or one roof, just to help some of the homeless population. We'll start first here in Coweeta. Um, and then if we have anything left over, then we'll go up maybe to downtown Atlanta or somewhere nearby. But Coweeta people will be served first, um, and then we will go out from there. Uh, it's something that, that Missy is doing, and so if you can, dig through your closets and find stuff for, for folks, and, and we'll get to those in need. The second thing is, is for council. Uh, the Three Rivers Regional Commission is putting out a water and sewer workshop on December sixteenth out at the fairgrounds on Pine Road. Um, with the work that we're probably gonna be doing in twenty twenty, this would be a good bit of background information for not only you guys, but also for staff. I think I'm gonna go ahead and authorize staff, if their schedule's allowed, to go ahead and go up there as a group. So that way they, they have all this background information, so that when I'm talking about USDA rural development, they'll know what they pay for, and what their loan process is and all that. Um, it's just gonna, it's only half a day, it's just right down the road, so it's really gonna benefit. And the third thing is, we have set dates for our public input sessions, public hearings, on activities and amenities. What do the people around here want to see in town? Do they want more plays, do they want a recreation league, do they want different classes here in the community center? Uh, you're gonna start seeing posters. Uh, you're gonna start seeing posters go up. The first one is Friday, January the tenth. The second one is it's a February, um, town council meeting. We're gonna skip March, then we'll have a, the final one in April. And it's also not on a council meeting night, so we're gonna kind of mix it up for people. Um, we'll also do some online stuff as far as surveys and just get some ideas and let people know this is what we're trying to do. What do you want, and this, and then just design things for their services to fit their needs. And it's just mainly for us to listen, uh, uh, and just kind of prompt the conversation. All right, so we do need to go into executive session for just a few moments to discuss personnel, so if I can have a motion.
I'm motion.
And a second? All right, all in favor? All right.